Ladies and gentlemen, unless you get some kind of confirmation from the city, which I don't think we can because I don't think they have it, that this course is in performance with the American Disabilities Act, the course is illegal. Not just on a federal level, because it's a federal law, but it's also illegal on the local level because this is incorporated into the comprehensive plan, which is an ordinance passed by you. It's illegal. They don't have the right to do it, and it's what cost us because as you all know, if you violate the federal law, what happens? You have to pay back the money. They will come at you and ask for the money because you built it and not performed with the law. I ask you to pass this resolution, but more importantly, I would ask a member of the council or as a group, you have to get some type of an answer on the ADA because if you don't, this plan is legal and it's going to cost us a penalty. And the fact that this hasn't been done just reiterates and underscores the problem we've had with this is that nobody's thought it out. We're just going to do it. No public hearings, no nothing. We had a petition to get the hearing, and thanks to Council Mercer and the other members of the Recreation Committee, we've got those hearings. But have we not taken bulldozers through our neighborhood and nobody, what do you mean by wrong? It's wrong. The park is not illegal. It is not a referendum on disco. It is a referendum on location because the location is wrong. I thank you for your time.
Next up, first to side this speaker is James McHale, County Attorney.
I'm James McHale, County Attorney, State of Kentucky. A resident of the city of Kentucky my whole life, except for a brief period of time, six years in these parks. I am a founder of OneToMyLand. This is for some people who don't know me. A lot of people know me, but that's exactly my story. Co-founder of Kentucky One Land, Parks Commission, Riverfront Commission for Missinception, and organized a festival for the opening in the park this year. I'm not here about the golf disc, believe it or not. I'm here about the park. I'm worried about the park. Stu has made a very radical point. All of this noise, all of this talk about the golf disc, it's fluff because if we don't take care of the park, we won't have a park. I don't know if people have a concept of what a park is. A park to me is a place for passive recreation, a place for safe recreation, a place for our children to see what it's like to have a tree, have some flowers, to see the birds, go to the petting zoo. We have a historic carousel in this little park, Luft carousel. The organ is broken. The organ is worth a million dollars. It's not even being identified to be repeated. There's a belt that's broken on the carousel. The carousel's in trouble. The carousel doesn't have a fire protection system in it. The boat house sidewalk is coming up. People could break and let all of them down. I spoke, when I was under the Park Commission, I spoke to the commission about ways to pay for these things since we made a lot of money with OneToMyLand. We didn't stick to sitting with a building with OneToMyLand. There's a way to get money, private money, to do things. But nobody wants to go down that road. We want to use grants. We want to use money that's going to be tax paid money. So I'm here to plead for the park. As I said, the disco has brought something to a head, and I'm just adding to it. We need to protect the park, and if that means we have to limit what we do in the park, then we need to be good stewards of the park. We owe it to the people in the city of Kentucky. Seventy-one thousand people live in this city, and there are 26 picnic tables in the park. Twenty-six picnic tables for a city that has seventy-one thousand people in it. That doesn't feel right to me. Doesn't sit right to me. There's places in that park where you're probably going to put this golf disc and we're going to put some parka tables, some fireplaces, so that everybody has a chance to use the park without having to pay to use the park. So I'm here about the park. I'm not here about a particular issue. I love the park and I'm worried about it. Thank you.
The next person is Breslin Zulo, 160, Rollout.
After doing some research on disco, I have a conclusion. Disco is not compatible with any other passive form of recreation, namely the walking trails. The walking trails that many of us use daily, often more than once a day. The walking trails, the school cross-country trackings are held every single fall. I have to wonder how much research was put into designing this. This week I noticed that there's a basket for a disco right next to the softball field, right on a grass where people spread blankets and take care of their grandchildren as they watch their children play softball. There are going to be people in the park throwing these sharp discs aiming to an area where there's little kids, there's toddlers. I mean, that makes no sense at all. Who would have designed a course like that? I don't understand it. I just know that it's not being maintained. The city doesn't have the manpower. They don't have the finances to maintain it unless the people that use it are going to raise money to maintain it themselves. I think about the physical fitness trail. It was pretty, I don't know, 20, 30 years ago. That was a wonderful idea. It's been completely vandalized because it can't be repaired. So that was actually a good idea, and it's gone. There's nothing left of it now. People were in the park all the time, kids playing with their things. And how many times did the trash trucks have thrown in the duck pond? And it took years ago that snowman, I don't know, 20 feet tall or more, ended up in the duck pond. Things like that happen. It's going to be analyzed. How's the city going to take care of repairing that? How's it going to be maintained? Is someone that uses that park every single day, run by rain, snow, sunshine? I don't want to see my park, my walking trails destroyed, and that's what's going to happen. I don't think the park is big enough to vote a passive, like, use some of the trails.
That concludes the board report, portion of the meeting. Majority of my colleagues, including the city council prior to the oral assistance commissions because of everyone that's here on this particular issue, so the city council becomes the one to call. President Moran, Council Barry.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Here.
The president.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Council Reddick.
Here.
Council Wilkenny.
Here.
Adrian Tannen. And with the majority of my colleagues, I would like to move to area three. If I may before this, I ask you all to stand and join us in the class meeting.
I would like this right in the audience to begin. I would like to declare the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council Mercer, you agree?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't agree, excuse me. I don't agree with the resolutions in the urgent administration's proposal for the current disco project to scale back the project from nine hole course concentrated in the central area of the park, not generally used by parkgoers for a twelve-point trial basis before considering expansion. Move back to the resolution, Council Wilkenny.
Yeah, motion by Council, but second by Council, Barry. The resolution urged the administration to halt the current disco project and scale back the project to the nine-hole course concentrated in the central area of the park, not generally used by parkgoers for a twelve-point trial basis before considering expansion. Me coming.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read the resolution. It was a very good idea. You had to have copies of it printed up so that the audience could see it. There's no sense in going over it. You had a few prepared remarks, but I couldn't. I propose this resolution, excuse me again, after months of frustration on my own part and after hearing the weak complaints and concerns voiced by my earlier folks in my district, District Three, which includes, say, the park and the athletic neighborhood. And I'll also trust you with the administration's stubborn insistence on allowing ahead with this project. But I can gather very, very few people in this city. I have yet to come across someone who says they are in favor of this project. Actually, there were three people, I take that back, there were three people who live in the city who came before recreation maybe from two different meetings. One lived in this, one in this, two in this, five who were in favor of the project. All the other folks that came for those three hours of meetings in recreation were all from other cities, power of the island, and elsewhere in Massachusetts. You know, they're using the park here to use our city park. Does the plan make a very insightful observation that this is not old state park, this is not the odder state park, this is the Tuckett's city park. We maintain it with the tax dollars, generally speaking, the Tuckett residents want to enjoy it. Now, the ultimate goal of the resolution, which is the final target, that really is urging the administration to scale it back to nine holes in the area, I propose, be on both sides of the road, the air friendship arc, so essentially between the end of the pond and sand dits and the top of the road approaching Casamino. So those two areas, I mean, aside, and then down by the right of way, the National Bridge has the transmission. That's why I meant centrally located. But I think the ultimate goal of the resolution is a win-win. The administration seems to think that there's a big clamoring for this. They get a disco course to put, utilize the grant money that allows, the grant money that allows. The council through this has their concerns, their reticence, heard and acknowledged. The parkgoers that don't live in the area get to see if this is really a boon for the city or a blessing for the city as taxpayers. And the folks who are here tonight, primarily the neighbors, they get to see if their concerns are misplaced or if the site of the holes aren't misplaced. I see it as a win-win on both sides. I truly don't see, and I'm going to urge you later to pass this resolution, but I truly don't see any downside to it. As a matter of fact, before drafting the resolution, I approached the administration and asked them if they would consider doing section what this asks them to do on the overall without me having to go into this formal, almost adversarial position. And it was kind of a start game. And that's part of the problem. Even though we have a revised layout, it's been revised a couple of times, it shows that the administration has indeed been trying to compromise to a certain extent. But every compromise has been followed up with essentially the fact that this is going to happen. So it doesn't really matter what the opposition is, how much opposition there is, it's going to happen, and that's what you can do inside of flavor of the medicine for you. And that's, that just doesn't sit away. It's, you know, I, all the folks that came to those meetings, all the folks that are here tonight, I think it's the height of arrogance for us on the third floor or those on the second floor to just disregard whatever is just saying, the whole way this process goes down. So when I was turned aware that the goal for the administration to do it on their own went this way, it was suggested that this is kind of somewhat of a political stunt or a political maneuver, which it couldn't be further from the truth. I'm just trying to get these folks heard and to listen to it, but they have not been heard. And one of the other suggestions was that this is really on us, each of us, because we didn't do our due diligence, was the term, I think, I was told. And we didn't do our due diligence. So I guess that means it's over and it's going to happen. So that couldn't be further from the truth. I don't speak for anybody here, but I don't believe anybody here saw this layout until things were far in place. And the only reason the people on Hastings first time, the only reason I saw this was because somebody on Hastings saw somebody pounding his things into the ground by Marley and Artest and called the mayor. We had a neighborhood meeting. Their concern was, oh, wait, but, you know, didn't go down the road to Redwood and Oswald and Park Avenue and eat. They never got the notice. They never knew about this. And Mr. Google had mentioned twice in back at the committee meetings that he did not know anything about this. I ran into, I forget the last name of her, twice while walking the trails myself. She had no idea until we went on the road with this. And the reason they don't know, none of them knows, until essentially it was too late, was that the ordinance does not require a notice to our pro bono speakers because it's not technically a construction project or a building. And Mr. Google asked the mayor why he didn't know, why he didn't receive a notice and not, I think to vote, Mr. Google, you were told.
Didn't have to.
We didn't have to.
Correct.
Now, being required to notify the folks in the area of the world that they're doing so locally is a whole other story. So it just, you know, this is not about us, the council, knowing for the last couple of years that something was coming down the road, we didn't know exactly what it was, we didn't know how intrusive, and we didn't know where it was going to be when I saw it on top of this a lot more, a lot more quickly. I just don't see the downside to taking a step back as a resolution versus concentrating nine consecutive holes in an area that's not utilized by folks walking the trails or somebody, or whoever, trying to learn what they're explaining. Nine consecutive holes for a period of 12 months, I like Mr. Plank's idea of putting together a committee to discuss whether or not expansion is warranted, whether or not it is where they should go. Look, I've been told by the administration that the holes are all in. That's what I thought in the beginning, I was going to confirm that myself. And yes, the majority, as I can tell, of the holes are not all in, and it's really just a cement chunk in the ground with a pipe that sticks up like this, this far as a collar to close to the park. I'm not saying it fills up. I'm just saying, take a step back and please take into consideration the people who are most affected, who live in the area, the people who are most affected as frequent park visitors. So with that, I will urge my colleagues to pass this resolution and send it off to the neighborhood. I guess if you're involved.
Is there ready to announce that? Council Wilkenny.
Yeah, I appreciate Council Mercer's comments, and I deal with, I guess I acknowledge his frustration because I asked the same questions when this process started. We all saw a certain figure, and then when a different figure came to us, we started to ask questions about it, and then we're basically told that, well, that's not within the parameters of our scope. Pass it along, and that's it, it's done and over. I don't really appreciate that as a body when you ask a question, just like I, I would prefer that the administration has an issue with this body that they bring up to us and we deal with it and resolve it, just like I would presume the same thing for this body, that we have an issue with the administration that we bring to them and we resolve it and we heard, and felt like we heard. But unfortunately, from the beginning of this, the attitude was, it's going to happen. Thank you for the questions, thank you for your concerns, but we'll be doing installation next week, you know, or something along that. And to the mayor's credit, he reached out to myself, I mentioned he reached out to Council Mercer, tried to answer my questions. I still have a lot because I did a lot of research myself about what the cost of the council disallowed was. We approved $20,000, and all of a sudden we're $62,000. It just didn't seem right, and when asked, when asked this simple question, we just didn't get, we just didn't get a simple answer. So with that, I'll be supporting the Council's resolution.
Senator Nussell, Council Nussell.
I just want to say that as part of the Department's committee, I was, I'm taking a balanced approach to the concerns of the residents. I initially and always have mentioned that I'm in support of investment for the public community in our city, but at the same time, I need the residents that have certainly a voice, and tonight I'm going to be supporting the proposal for this.
Council Wilkenny, I would say, you know, I fully appreciate Council Mercer's resolution. I will obviously support it. I think this is another reason why we've already need to reevaluate how we do our community mental block of money. This is a perfect example where community money was going to go into a community, but I feel like the majority of the people that are going to benefit from this look on outside. And so I appreciate, I thank everybody who came and gave their input, and again, I will support Council Mercer's resolution.
I obviously would support the resolution. This is a clear example of what happens when we, third floor, second floor, don't get input from the people. I don't think anyone sitting here, particularly when I raised the issue, had any comprehension of how this was going to be made, the park. And when I toured with the mayor, Council Mercer, and the public works there, I couldn't believe how we had approached a budding progress in doing it. And again, I think that at some point down the road, we've put in, whatever we do, anything in that particular, I think James McHale made such a great point tonight, speaking with passion about that park. That's all we've got in this community, and if we don't protect it, and this doesn't protect those odd walking paths, I still can't figure out what disco meant, you know, I'm just torn up in no sense. But we can't throw everything in there. And I have to have one consideration, not one throughout this whole thing, say, if there was something they wanted to do, so I think a lot of them don't know where they are either. But I think this is a good opportunity, I think, for the administration to go back and sit with the neighbors and say, we really still want to do this, where can we do it? But it cannot perform the current form that it's in right now, so I support this resolution.
I'm just going to say, the hours that it must have taken, Council Mercer, to craft this resolution were hours that were, I hate to say it, Terry, that they shouldn't have ever been put into this because this was not done the right way right from the get-go. We were given a, well, we voted to support this a number of years ago, and it was supposed to be on a small scale, never thinking that it would come to what it came to, and it was basically shocking to hear it's going through. It was like the administration was enamored with this idea of disco. And I lived in the city all my life, but I lived near the park, I'm District Three, I played on the playgrounds and in the streets, and, you know, this disco, I think that it's not what should be in the park, not in the enormity of it. And I think it's very much of a, I guess, compromise to go this route because it was all or nothing, and I'm definitely going to support this. I'm not happy with the nine holes, but at least it won't be in the entire park, and maybe the whole thing won't fly if Mr. Plank's group gets going and people give their comments. Maybe it will be heard, but the way this whole thing turned out, I've got to say, Council Mercer put a lot of the time into this, and I guess it's the best we can do right now. So I'm definitely going to support this, but I don't like the way the whole thing came about in the, I guess, strong wall, whatever it was, that rose to this point. So that's it. It's my opinion.
I'm going to say I kind of, I don't know, I'm under a vision of a couple of comments. First of all, I'm dedicated to what came here tonight to express their views of the information that they had for us. I listened to a lot of things tonight, and particularly listened to a lady there, I think her name is Betty. Imagine walking your grandchild through the park and having a disco across on that track. You know, this artist who says that $20,000 is the maximum she's ever seen anyone spend on a disco, and that was professional disco. So there's some serious questions. And Council, Council Ken, who brings up legal questions regarding the areas that the city has used, and I am very, very strong on the ADA, if it doesn't, it doesn't happen, it's not going to happen. So after, I'm going to support this resolution, I'm going to support one line more than any other authority in that light is, all any further work on the car project. Okay, that's only a portion of this resolution, but I think that's the ultimate goal of what we're looking for. All, and take another look at it, seriously, and I'm not a guest, expanding activities in the park, but if they're dangerous to the other activities that we already have, then they shouldn't happen. And there's been a lot of information that's come to this meeting, research, and I've worked, and that's why I'm glad you're welcome coming here tonight, because it's been a little bit fragmented, coming from different areas, one person thinking this, but tonight we have kind of got a whole picture of at least our, and I'm going to support this resolution for that reason. But after we pass this resolution, I'm going to ask Council Mercer to request a letter to the people regarding the ADA portion of this and also the overall comprehensive plan of the city, whether it's an evaluation. So without any further comment, I'll ask the board to hold the word.
President Hatt.
Yes.
Council Barry.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Council Ken.
Yes.
Council Mercer.
Yes.
Council Reddick.
Yes.
Council Wilkenny.
Yes.
Adrian.
I will thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for moving this ahead. This is probably the first time all these people who've voiced their opinion have truly heard and truly had kept that, like, for the long time, for the rest of their night. I will ask a couple of things on a group record basis. First, if we can transmit that resolution to the mayor's office as soon as possible and ask for a review of the law in the next meeting from the administration, whether they will be adhering to the request of the council, and if not, why not? And if we can send a letter, two letters actually, one to Elizabeth Miles, asking him if this project conforms with both the comprehensive plan and the master plan for slip art that was devised, I think we heard in 1990. And as well, ask him, excuse me, if, in his opinion...